In the summary man to a judicial proceeding, the quorum appropriated. To a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times and any questions or comments must be limited to issues. That are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. The secretary is directed to enter into the minutes of this meeting, the public announcements.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Can we have roll call, please?
Absolutely. Ms. Sandra Coleman? Ms. Sandra Coleman?
Present.
Thank you. Mrs. Jerry Johnson?
Present.
Mrs. Loma Stephenson?
Here.
Mr. Michael Stinson? Mr. Michael Stinson?
There we are. And then the organizer had me on mute. I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Lewis Finney? Mr. Lewis Finney?
Here.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Darryl Coleman alternate? Mr. Darryl Coleman?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we'll call the professionals. Willingborough Attorney, Matthew Waleski.
Hi, everybody. I'm here. Thank you.
Zoning Board Engineer? Ben Matlock? Ben Matlock?
He was here before.
Here, I can see his picture. I think we need to unmute him.
Now I'm good. I'm here.
Thank you. And zoning board planner, Christopher Dockney.
He's not here this evening. I don't think he's coming tonight, correct, Mr. Matlock?
That's correct.
Okay. And willing inspection, Ted Evans? Ted Evans? And we have the board secretary, myself.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to 2021 and the 2021 reorganization meeting of the Willingborough zoning board. This evening on your agenda are a number of resolutions. In addition, you'll need to take steps when we go into formal with the election of a chairman. The election of a vice chairman. And then you have on your agenda this evening, the proposed adoption of resolutions. The first resolution is for to adopt meeting dates, times, and places. The second resolution is to authorize the advertising media for the zoning board. The third resolution is to permit you to go into executive session to consider professional contracts. The fourth resolution is to appoint a solicitor. The fifth resolution is to appoint an engineer and planner. There is no old business, and significantly, while we anticipated the continued application of any Willingborough LLC at the Grand Marketplace, that application has been withdrawn without prejudice. Yesterday, at about noon, we received a letter from the applicants council addressed to our board secretary, advising that the application was being withdrawn without prejudice, which means they could file it again, but they have withdrawn it without prejudice. And that they would not be appearing this evening. We amended the agenda as quickly as we could and posted that amended agenda noting that it had been adjourned. We also took steps to attempt to post this letter on the website. I just don't know if it made it to the website yet. But if it hasn't made it there as of today, it will shortly. Just with everybody being remote and all different locations, there was some delay, I think. So that application will not be heard and will not be continued tonight. It's been withdrawn. So your reorganization meeting will be for just that. Your reorganization, you'll elect your chair, your vice chair, and then you'll do your orders of business, which this board has been doing for as long as I've been, eighteen years. Do in the normal course, you adopt your meeting dates. Significantly, you'll note that the resolution number one that you receive with regard to the annual meeting dates was somewhat more comprehensive than in years past because of the requirements of the new emergency administrative code sections related to remote meetings and what the annual notice must say in terms of advising individuals how to participate remotely. So we've done that, and that's what the new notice is. That's where we are. So if the chair or any members have any questions?
No, I guess we'll do the executive session after we go through everything else.
The way it's set up right now is that you're going to formal. We'll open it up as usual. You do your roll call. Then we'll need a, the election of the chairman, the election of the vice chairman. Then you can do the two resolutions, one and two.
Right.
We'll need a motion to go into executive session, and there's a resolution authorizing you to go into executive session, noting that no actions to be taken in executive session. You'll simply be reviewing and considering the responses to the request for proposals you receive for, from the professionals. And you come out of executive sessions and then you'll consider the proposed resolutions four and five.
Okay. And we can render our decision tonight, right, before we close the meeting? I mean, I realize we're working it a little bit more different than we have in past years because of the way we're doing it now, so I'm trying to get used to that. So, okay. So let me see, it isn't. Can I get a motion to start the formal meeting since unless anybody else has questions or comments before we go into the formal?
I move to begin the formal session.
Okay. Could I have a second?
Well, second.
Thank you. Uh.
All in favor of ending the informal and going into formal, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, Madam Secretary, you can note that, and for those connecting now, just as we did note in the informal session, that we certainly will address it once we open the formal session, but the application, any Willingborough LLC application 2020-2 related to the Grand Market place location, that application has been withdrawn without prejudice. So that application, there'll be no testimony or proofs. The application's been withdrawn. We identified and notified all the objectors, the formal objectors with council. And we amended the agenda noting that it had been withdrawn so that we can address it again in formal, but in case anybody's waiting to hear that, it will not be heard tonight. All right.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, if you want to go through the niceties put for us, please, in opening up the formal, and we'll do, go through the flag salute, roll call, and the same reading of the Open Public Meetings Act to abide by the bold requirements, that would be great.
Awesome. All right, I will call the formal meeting to order. Can we stand to salute the flag, please? I pledge to the legends of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Willingborough Township Zoning Board. These lines of this meeting is being conducted in accordance with the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act and all other applicable laws of the state of New Jersey, including the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, Division of Local Government Service, March 23, 2020, and April 2, 2020, guideline, guidance documents for remote public meeting, NJAC 539-1, title Emergency Remote Meeting Protocol for Local Public Bodies. Notice of the conduct of this meeting has been posted in the Willingborough Township Municipal Building, published in the newspaper in December 26, 2020, of general circulation and posted on the Willingborough Township website within the time required by law. The township website posting also contain all application materials and anticipated exhibits for matters on the zoning board's agenda this evening. All proceedings this evening will be in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Municipal Land Use Law, the board adopted and established rules of procedure in any other applicable laws of the state of New Jersey. This board is a quasi judicial board, therefore this meeting shall be conducted in a similar manner to a judicial proceeding. The quorum appropriation to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times and any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. The secretary is directed to enter into the minutes of this public announcement.
Okay. Can we have roll call, please?
Absolutely. Ms. Sandra Coleman? Ms. Sandra Coleman?
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Jerry Johnson?
Present.
Mrs. Loma Stephenson?
Here.
Mr. Michael Stinson?
Here.
Mr. Lewis Finney?
Yeah.
Ms. Johnson Jackson?
Here.
Our alternate Darryl Coleman?
Here.
Thank you. Now professionals, Matthew Waleski?
I'm here. Good evening, everyone.
Zoning Board Engineer, Mr. Ben Matlock?
Here.
And Planner, Chris Dockney? Absent. Also Willingborough Inspection Representative, Ted Evans? And Zoning Board Secretary, myself, I'm here.
Okay.
Madam Secretary, Madam Chair, with Mr. Coleman, your alternate, that gives you seven. You have six members that are here this evening. Mr. Coleman would make seven. A zoning board is seven members, so Mr. Coleman will fully participate and should be polled in all of the votes as a fully participating member this evening.
Thank you.
At this point, Madam Chair, we welcome everybody to the 2021 reorganization meeting of the zoning board. I hope everyone's in good health. Before we get to, we'll certainly announce it when we get to it on our agenda item under new business. But for anyone that's interested in the application 2020-2, any Willingborough LLC, this was the application related to the Grand Marketplace location. That application was formally withdrawn yesterday by letter dated January 5, 2020, from the attorney for the applicant. The letter detailed that they're withdrawing the application without prejudice for the above, for this matter, indicating that they could refile with notice to all for any type of hearing, but the application has been withdrawn without prejudice. They will not be appearing this evening, and the matter will not be continued. So the matter will be noted as withdrawn. So if anyone has any interest in that application, that will not be heard this evening, and it has been withdrawn. Having said that, we can certainly address it if there's any questions about it when you get to the new business item in your agenda. But at this point, Madam Chair, respectfully, you should turn to your fellow board members now and request a motion to open up nominations for a chairman or chairperson. And then at the completion of those nominations, you can make a motion to close the nominations. See if we get seconds, and then you can take votes, and then proceed to the vice chair as well.
Okay. Okay, so an open question to the board. Who would you like to nominate as your chairperson for 2021?
There's been a motion to open up nominations. Do we have any nominations for chairperson for the zoning board for 2021?
Come on, guys.
Mr. Finney, I can, I can barely hear you, sir, so if you can get closer to the mic, maybe, maybe, I'm not sure if you're fully connected. I can barely hear you.
You hear now?
Little bit better, but not great. I can hear you enough to say, yes, I can hear you now, like one of those phone commercials, but yes. Not like I could hear you at the last meeting.
Well, I nominated, I'd like to nominate our current president.
That's a nomination by Mr. Finney of Ms. Jackson. So we have one nomination for Ms. Jackson, and do we have, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any other nomination that somebody would like to?
Any other nominations for chair at this time?
I'm sorry, can I have a second?
That was a motion by Finney, second by Stephenson for Jackson as chair.
Thank you.
And do we have any other nominations for chair? Could we get a motion to close nominations for chair?
Close the nomination for chair?
I second.
I think I heard first.
Ms. Johnson was first.
Ms. Jerry Johnson, I think she moved to close nominations.
Yes.
Want to second it?
I second.
Ms. Coleman's second.
Okay.
Now nominations for chair are over. At this point, we need a vote on a roll call vote for Ms. Jackson as your chair. When the secretary calls your name, if you want to elect Ms. Jackson as your chair, just state her name, please. So when they call your name, if you are voting in her favor, just say Jackson. And if you're not, then you can say, I'm not voting in favor of Ms. Jackson. Okay, Madam Chair, I mean, Madam Secretary, read the roll call.
Mrs. Sandra Coleman?
Jackson.
Mrs. Jerry Johnson?
Jackson.
Mrs. Loma Stephenson?
Jackson.
Mr. Michael Stinson?
Jackson.
Mr. Lewis Finney?
Jackson.
And Mr. Darryl Coleman?
Jackson.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Jackson. We are in your trusted hands.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate everybody, and I'm hoping that we're gonna have a good year. I mean, with the events of today, it's hard to realize, but I say, I think we can turn things around, and I think we can have a good year. So let's work towards that together. So I want to thank you guys for choosing me again this year. I really appreciate it. So now we'll go on to the vice chair.
So at this point, can you ask for a motion?
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Ask for a motion to open up nominations for vice chair.
Okay, could we have a nomination for the election of a vice chair, please?
This is a, this is a motion to open.
I nominate.
This is, we have a motion to open up nominations. We're not nominating yet.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's okay.
You want to make that motion?
Okay, why not?
I, Mrs. Stephenson, to open up nominations for vice chair. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
You have second by.
Thank you, Mr. Stinson.
Okay. We are now open to take nominations for vice chair. Do we have any nominations for vice chair?
Yes. I nominate Mr. Finney.
We have a Mr. Finney. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Everybody.
All right, I'm gonna put Mr. Stinson down. I heard him first. Do we have any other nominations for vice chair? Any other nominations for vice chair? Could I have a motion to close nominations for vice chair?
Motion to close nomination.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
And now a roll call vote for Mr. Finney as your vice chair. When your name is called, if you are in favor of Mr. Finney as vice chair, just say his name. Respect, Finney. And if you don't want to vote in his favor, say, I'm not in favor of Mr. Finney. Okay, roll call, please.
Okay. Ms. Sandra Coleman?
Finney.
Mrs. Jerry Johnson?
Finney.
Mrs. Loma Stephenson?
Finney.
Mr. Michael Stinson?
Finney.
Ms. Ms. Johnson Jackson?
Finney.
Ms. Johnson, thank you. And Mr. Darryl Coleman?
Finney.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Finney.
Congratulations, Mr. Finney.
Thank you. I, I, I too like to thank everybody for choosing me, for being the vice chairman. I also gonna try to do everything I, I can to make some, some improvement, improvement need, and also to be, be available if anybody have any type of question about that system. Again, thank y'all very much for your, for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Finney. Okay, so. Let me see, can we close?
Yep, we are, we're done with the nominations now. You've got, that's great. You got a chairman and a vice chair. So now, Madam Sec, Madam Chair, you could go on to consider Resolution 2021-1. It's your meeting dates, times, and places. The times are consistent with what you did this year. Conference meetings starting at 7:30, formal session to follow at 8 o'clock. The dates are the, as detailed in the annual notice, first Wednesday, except where noted, and you can see those two dates where it's noted. And you'll see that there's some additional supplements to the annual notice consistent with the emergency administrative code sections, given that I anticipate remote meetings certainly until sometime in the near future.
Okay. Before we make a motion, a motion to approve the times and dates and everything, does any one of the boards have questions? Are you satisfied with the dates, the times, and the place? Before we go further with this? Okay, Mr. Stinson, I see your thumb up. So is it safe to assume that we can now make a motion to approve the Resolution 2021?
Yep, we just need to document who makes the motion, who makes the second, and then if all are in favor, we can just do an aye vote, but we need, we do need a motion and a second.
Okay, who wants to make a motion to approve?
I make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Stinson.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Finney.
At this point, we can say all in favor of resolution, of adopting Resolution 2021-1, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Great.
Thank you, everyone.
Seven to zero.
Okay, can we move on to Resolution 2021-2? Which is the advertising media?
Designated papers for us through council. We have a primary and a secondary. They're noted there. They'll be consistent with ways it's been handled in past years with the Burlington County Times being your primary and other papers being potential secondaries. This would be the same one. We need a formal motion by one person and a second, and then we can do it all in favor.
Okay. So could I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Can I make a motion?
Make the motion, Will. Any second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Yes, bear with me, that's. Okay, all in favor of adopting Resolution 2021-2 relating, corresponding with the designation of authorized official newspaper procedure requirements, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay? Great, that's seven to zero. Next is the resolution to allow you to go into executive session. I hope we have our IT professional.
I know that's what I was, yeah. We can't, we can't throw everybody out now on being on Zoom.
I think he's able to take you into a conference room separately. You'll get an invite, you'll go there, and you can go to executive.
Could we make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-3, 2021-4, and 2021-5 together? Since it's all? Or do you want it done separately?
My, my understanding is this, is that you wanted to go, that there was a, you wanted to go into executive session so that you could discuss the professional contracts outside of the present.
Outside.
Then you would come back, and then you could either, you could then take action on the resolutions four and five.
Okay.
So this should be, now this should be, you should look for a motion on this resolution, which is consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act, and allows this board to go into executive session to discuss and deliberate the appointment of professionals. And it should be noted that the general nature of the subject to be discussed relates to the review of the request for qualifications submitted to the zoning board of adjustment from prospective professionals for consideration of their appointment for the 2021 calendar year. No formal action is to be taken in closed session, and no formal action will be taken in closed session. With that, Madam Chair, you should ask for a motion to adopt this resolution. Authorizing you to go into executive session.
Okay, could we adopt this resolution? To going to executive session?
I make a motion to adopt.
Thank you, Mr. Stinson.
I second.
Who's second?
Ms. Coleman.
Ms. Coleman. Okay, thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay? Okay, great, that's seven to zero. All right, now we have to have our IT magic.
Yeah.
James, are you there?
I'm here.
All right, are you, are you able to take our seven members into a separate conference room? So if they can do that, you can go with them and then bring them back when they're ready? All the members of the public, this will be just like a regular meeting where meetings, they go into executive session. I would ask that when they're in executive session, that we refrain from making any comments. We have to just, if you want to go off screen, you certainly can, but we should refrain from making any comments, and we'll just wait for them to come back from executive session.
Okay, thank you. Let me know when we can get started.
What will happen is each of you will get an invitation. Just give James some time. Each of you will get an invitation to, to go to the, the other room. You'll have to accept it, and then it'll take you there.
Okay.
And Ms. Frank, you should go with them.
Yes.
Yes, please.
You're on board secretary.
I'm living on my invite.
All right, patience.
Still a little different from what we're used to, so.
Never an easy task.
Are we there now?
No.
Not yet.
You'll know.
Not yet.
You'll know when you get there, because it'll just be the seven of you, and Ms. Frank, so it'll be the eight of you.
I still move to, to accept that motion, but whatever, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we know what you mean.
It's late, go ahead.
I second it.
Thank you, Ms. Stephenson.
Mrs. Stephenson.
Okay, so we'll go on to.
All, I have to say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Great. Thank you very much, everyone. I'll be brief. I've been with the board for a number of years, I think close to seventeen, eighteen. My goal is to protect you, protect the process, and try to do it the right way, even though that might not make everybody happy sometimes, our applicants, our members of the public. So I try to be respectful to everyone and just try to do what we need to do. So thank you very much. I look forward to working with everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Willisco. Can we move on to Resolution 2021-5, engineer and planner? We have chosen to keep CME as our board engineer and planner? So could.
Great, so I need a, I need a motion and a second on that motion, on Resolution 2021-5 to appoint CME as your engineer and planner.
Okay, could we have a motion?
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Could we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Stephenson. Okay, so.
All in favor, say aye.
Oh, yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's a seven, zero. Okay, it's a seven to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Matlock.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Yeah, welcome.
I greatly appreciate working with you guys. I, I really enjoy it and look forward to some continued success in 2021.
Thank you so much. We wish you the best, too. Now, could we move on to Resolution 2021-3, professional contracts?
Yep, you adopted that before you went in.
Yeah, so.
Adopted that before you went in.
Okay, so we're done?
Well, now you're gonna go to, there's no old business to new.
No old business.
We announced it earlier, just to make sure, but we'll announce it again. Anyone with interest in application 2020-2, any Willingboro LLC, the Grand Marketplace location, that application has been withdrawn without prejudice. We received correspondence, which will be made part of the file, we posted to the website, formally withdrawing the application without prejudice and giving us notice that the applicant and his professionals would not be attending the zoning board of adjustment meeting this evening. They have the ability to file the same or a different application in the future, so we'll see what happens, but it's been withdrawn.
Thank you. Could we go now to public comment? Could we open up public comment?
Okay, we can go into public comment. James, do we have anybody in the public that would like to be heard?
I don't see any hands.
So if there's any members in the public that would like to be heard, you could indicate so by raising your hand on this platform, the Zoom platform. Let's give it, let's give it a little bit.
We have Mr. Gary Johnson.
Good evening, Gary Johnson, 54 Gramercy Lane. I'd just like to congratulate Ms. Jackson and Ms. Fin, Mr. Finney. It looks like a good start to a year, which I hope will be very good, so I wish everyone the best, and of course, Happy New Year since it's that.
Thank you so much.
So, let's have a good year. We've had.
Yes, please. We need it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anybody else?
Yeah, Ms. Sharon L. Anderson.
Okay, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I, I really appreciate the work of the zoning board. I suspect that the last few months might have felt a little tense with a concern stressing between a developer and residents of Willingboro. And I feel that those board members that I know handle themselves with exceptional professionalism. You know your, your, your duty to be unbiased going into something. You, you know, you know you had other people making comments, but I feel that what I heard were people who were keeping an open mind to protect our town and to evaluate whether something fit within the rules of zoning, which is what you have to do. The rest is up to planning. So I just thank you very much for your thoughtfulness and for your professionalism, and I thank you Chair Jackson, and thank you attorney for your work this year, and I look forward to New Year.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. I really appreciate your kind words, because some, yeah, sometimes it gets pretty hairy, especially the last two months has been really a little, you know, but we appreciate your comments. We thank you, and I wish you and the board a good year and stay safe. Thank you. Anybody else?
How's it look, James?
I do not see anyone else.
Okay, going once, going twice. Anybody else from the public that wants to be heard? Okay, Madam Chair, we've afforded everyone from the public that wanted to be heard. We've got nobody else. And now you can go to board comment.
Okay, we'll close the public comment, and we'll open up the board comment. Any board members have any comments to make, please?
I have a comment to make. It's gonna be very short. Ms. Jackson, I'm, I'm, I'm very happy and thrilled to see you come back as, as our president, and I'm looking forward to a great year, and, and I'm looking forward to us working together, because we all, we all had the same goal.
Yep.
So it all, it's a, so we should, we had no problem in working together. So I wish, I wish the whole board a, a, a good year and just make, just make some good decisions for our town that we represent.
Yes, I agree with you, Mr. Finney. I really want to thank the board for being so diligent with everything and for trying to learn, because we have some new members, and they have been really super. They ask questions, they want to learn, and I really appreciate that. And we have to work together in 2021 and make the best for our community. We owe it to our residents, and we owe it to our town. So thank you so much, everyone. Anybody else, please? Any other board comments?
All right, no other board comments, so Madam Chair, you could ask for a motion for adjournment, get a second, and then everyone say aye, and we'll be off.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting for tonight?
I, I make the motion.
I knew you were gonna be first.
Ms. Stephenson, thank you so much for participating tonight the way you did, too. I really appreciate it. But I knew Wilma was gonna be the first one, I said, let's go. Okay, having said that. Having said that, I wish everybody a Happy New Year again. Let's work together, let's make this town great. Thank you, Mr. Finney. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.